Good evening and welcome to the Board's December 5th reorganization hall as well as regular Board meeting. The first order of business this evening is the swearing in of two new county commissioners, Mr. Ashley Morgan and Mr. Matthew Swain. The first county commissioner-elect to go to be sworn in will be Mr. Ashley Morgan. If you'll just go down front, I believe Representative Justin Burr is here this evening with us. Thank you for being here, and I believe Representative Burr is going to carry out the duties of swearing in.
(mumbling)
And if you will be ready to take your oath, then if you will repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ashley Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Ashley Morgan.
Do further solemnly and sincerely.
Do further solemnly and sincerely.
Swear that I will be.
Swear that I will be.
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Endeavor to support.
Endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
With the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And abilities.
And abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Ashley Morgan.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And truly execute.
And truly execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
And abilities.
And abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will not allow.
That I will not allow.
My actions.
My actions.
As a county commissioner.
As a county commissioner.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal or political friendships.
By personal or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Ashley Morgan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will administer justice.
That I will administer justice.
Without favoritism to anyone.
Without favoritism to anyone.
That I will do equal law.
That I will do equal law.
And right.
And right.
To all persons.
To all persons.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Or willingly take.
Or willingly take.
By myself or any other person.
By myself or any other person.
Any fee, gift, gratuity.
Any fee, gift, or gratuity.
Or reward whatsoever.
Or reward whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing by me.
Or thing by me.
Done or to be done.
Done or to be done.
By the virtue of my office.
By the virtue of my office.
Except the salary and allowances.
Except the salary and allowances.
By law provided.
By law provided.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And truly execute faithfully.
And truly execute faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
To the best of my skills.
To the best of my skills.
And abilities.
And abilities.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you.
Our next order of business will be the swearing in of Commissioner-elect Matthew Swain, and our clerk of court, Mr. Michael Honeycutt, is here. Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt, for being available to do the swearing in. I state your name.
I, Matthew J. Swain.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Matthew J. Swain.
Do further.
Do further.
Solemnly and sincerely.
Solemnly and sincerely.
Swear that I will.
Swear that I will.
Be faithful.
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to.
And to.
The constitutional powers.
The constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may.
Which are or may.
Be established.
Be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I.
And that I.
Will endeavor.
Will endeavor.
To support.
To support.
Maintain.
Maintain.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of said state.
Of said state.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution.
With the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of.
To the best of.
My knowledge.
My knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Matthew J. Swain.
Do further swear.
Do further swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and truly.
Well and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of county commissioner.
Of county commissioner.
According.
According.
To the best of.
To the best of.
My skill and ability.
My skill and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
That I will.
That I will.
Not allow.
Not allow.
My actions.
My actions.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
To be influenced.
To be influenced.
By personal.
By personal.
Or political.
Or political.
Friendships or obligations.
Friendships or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Matthew J. Swain.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Administer justice.
Administer justice.
Without favoritism.
Without favoritism.
To anyone.
To anyone.
That I will.
That I will.
Do equal law.
Do equal law.
And right.
And right.
To all persons.
To all persons.
That I will.
That I will.
Not knowingly.
Not knowingly.
Or willingly.
Or willingly.
Take by myself.
Take by myself.
Or any other person.
Or any other person.
Any fee.
Any fee.
Gift.
Gift.
Gratuity.
Gratuity.
Or reward.
Or reward.
Whatsoever.
Whatsoever.
For any matter.
For any matter.
Or thing.
Or thing.
By me done.
By me done.
Or to be done.
Or to be done.
By virtue.
By virtue.
Of my office.
Of my virtue of my office.
Except.
Except.
The salary.
The salary.
And allowances.
And allowances.
By law provided.
By law provided.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and truly.
Well and truly.
Execute faithfully.
Execute faithfully.
Impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
Of Stanley County Commissioner.
To the best.
To the best.
Of my skill.
Of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations, Commissioner Swain. Our next order of business this evening is the nomination and election of a chairman. The Board will do elected chairman for the next year as well as vice-chairman. They will approve our public bonds, committee assignments, and establish the 2017 meeting schedule. Once all those items are concluded, the Board will go into their regular agenda for this December 5th meeting. At this time, I will take nominations for the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Which county manager?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner LaHawn to serve as chair.
So noted. Are there any other nominations for the position of chairman? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the nominations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Lauter and second by Commissioner Efron. All those in favor say aye. All those against? Hearing none. The motion passes to close the nominations. Now I will accept it by vote for Commissioner LaHawn to be chairman of the Stanley County Commissioners for the next year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Vote is six to one. Congratulations, Commissioner LaHawn, Chairman LaHawn. The gavel is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. It's time to elect a vice-chair. According to pursuant to GS 1538-39, at this time I open the floor for nominations for vice-chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner McIntyre.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Burleson as vice-chair.
Okay, Commissioner Burleson's been nominated for vice-chair. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, is there a nomination to close the nomination? Is there a motion to close the nomination?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we close the nominations and that Commissioner Burleson be elected by a commission.
Congratulations, Commissioner Burleson. At this time, I would like to get a motion to approve the following public official bonds. Tax administrator Clint Swain, $100,000, expires October 28, 2017. Finance officer Toby Henson, $150,000 bond expires June 30, 2017. Register of deeds Suzanne Lauter, $50,000 bond expires December 1, 2017. Sheriff George T. Burris, $5,000 bond expires December 1, 2017. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bonds as presented.
Commissioner Burleson makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to open the floor for appointments to the following boards and committees. Commissioner Lauter.
Thank you, sir. I'm presenting a slate of nominees for the following boards and committees. First is Economic Development Commission Chair Jan Lauter. Alternate Economic Development Commission Bill LaHawn. Member Board of Health Jan Lauter. Member Social Services Board Gene McIntyre. Member Library Board of Trustees Ashley Morgan. Member Airport Authority Ashley Morgan. Alternate Airport Authority Scott Efron. Chairman Fire District Commission Matthew Swain. Member Senior Services Board Gene McIntyre. Member Rural Transportation Planning Organization Matthew Swain. Alternate Rural Transportation Planning Organization Joseph Burleson. Member Stanley Water and Sewer Authority Joseph Burleson. Alternate Stanley Water and Sewer Authority Scott Efron. Member Central Atlanta Council of Governments Bill LaHawn. Alternate Central Atlanta Council of Governments Ashley Morgan. I move to accept the slate as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, even though I will be voting against this slate of officers, I just want it known that I am looking forward to serving on the two boards that I have been appointed to.
Thank you, Commissioner McIntyre. Any other discussion? All in favor of these assignments, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion carries, six to one. At this time, it's time to establish the meeting dates for 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
There is one other board, number 12, item. Since we're fresh off campaign, I'd like to make a motion to create a new committee, a regulatory reform committee, to look at different ways of better utilizing Stanley County resources. I'd like to add myself, Commissioner Swain, and Commissioner Burleson to the.
That's in the form of a motion, Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Lauter.
Before discussion, I would ask Mr. Morgan if he would be willing to entertain table in this, because I had no knowledge of these three committees, these new committees, and I think to perform our duties as commissioners, that it would be more appropriate perhaps for us to do this in February at our planning retreat, and we could get into discussion at length for these, and have more input and have time to think about it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Burleson.
I think waiting to begin this process does no one any good, and I think it's time that we move forward and roll up our sleeves and get to work.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think that beginning on it in February, and the planning retreat is certainly addressing it in a timely manner, I don't think that this is a simple task. I think there would be a lot of questions. I think we need to be looking at what regulations exist and what or which of those that we would find needed to be adjusted or amending, or if they would be in conflict perhaps with actually the regulations that are from the state, which are definitely pertaining to the Utilities Department. There's a lot to look at before we just jump into this, and I don't think it's an easy, quick thing to do. And I think to have this seven-member board participate in the discussion and to have everyone given a fair opportunity to address the concerns, I mean, I'm not against it, I'm open to it, but I think it's more appropriate for it to be at the retreat. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauter. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just state that this committee would have no authority to take action that would be required by the Board, and this committee would bring any recommendations back to the full Board, and seems appropriate at a planning retreat that what this Board may put together or may not put together would be appropriate to bring at that point in time, and then all seven members, we can discuss it diligently.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Lauter.
I'd say to that, that's okay, I understand that, but that's three of the members of this Board. It doesn't say that we would include any of the public. Some of the public might want to attend these meetings, they might want to have some input in it, and I don't think at this point we need to close that door and say that it's only three commissioners. It could be four commissioners.
What I would like to see happening is with the three commissioners now, but once we get the committee formed, then look into, I'd like to see one general, two contractors, one residential, one commercial, and on that as well, to help look at the different codes and regulations that we have.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none. Commissioner Morgan, would you repeat again the members that you are asking to be put on this committee?
Myself, Commissioner Swain, and Commissioner Burleson at this time.
Okay, if there's no other discussion.
Excuse me?
Yes.
For clarification, that is on the utility regulatory reform, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor of this new committee with the commissioners that Commissioner Morgan named, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Swain, Commissioner Burleson, being put on this committee, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
How about raising your hands, because I'm not sure. The vote will carry four to three with that committee. So I guess those three that are put on that committee, I would recommend that you all meet and be prepared at the February, I'm assuming it's going to be in February, at our planning retreat, to do a presentation of what the committee is trying to accomplish. At this time, let's establish the meeting dates for 2017. If you would, the dates are in your packet. The normal commission meetings are the first and third Monday of each month, except for the months of June, July, August, September, and December, and the time of the regular meetings will be at 7:00 PM. Please review the calendar, and I would entertain a motion that we approve the calendar for 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner McIntyre.
For the past two or three years, we have not met, but we've only met once in May. Kind of gives the county manager's staff time to get everything ready to present the budget to us on the first Monday meeting in June, and I would ask to make a motion that we pass these dates and remove Monday, May 15 from that list.
Commissioner McIntyre, are all other dates satisfactory?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, so you're putting that in the motion that the calendar will be the dates that are presented, with the exception of Monday, May 15 will not be a meeting date.
Correct, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask Commissioner McIntyre to amend that motion and remove May 1st instead of May 15. I think for budget purposes, we would need, if we're going to remove one of them, per county manager.
Is that... Okay, yes, I will accept that amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is that we will meet on May 15 and not meet on May 1, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to vote on that amendment, and then we'd vote on the other dates, is that correct? I'll give that.
I think either way is fine. You can.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to five. I would like. I would like to state that during our regular meetings of the Board of the County Commission, in order to act in our capacity as the Board of Governors for the Greater Baden Water and Sewer District and for the Party Point Water District, may at our discretion recess the commission regular meeting and reconvene as the Board of Governors of either of these two entities in order to conduct business matters relating to any one of these entities. At this time, would like to call on Commissioner Lauter to do our devotion and pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll bow your heads, please. Almighty God, bless our nation and make it true to the ideas of freedom and justice and brotherhood for all who make it great. Be close to our President and President-elect and our statesmen, give them vision and courage as they ponder decisions affecting peace and the future of the world. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for all thy gifts. Make us more deeply aware of our duties and responsibilities as public servants and as citizens. Direct us in all our doings with thy most gracious favor and further us with thy continual help, that in all our works, begun, continued, and ended, we may praise thee. Grant that we may live and work together in brotherly unity to our own well-being and the prosperity of this community. In his name we pray, amen. If you will, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner Lauter. At this time, item number one. At this time, item number one is Wreaths Across America presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Point of order, I think we need to approve the agenda.
You're right.
Sorry. If I may, offer three items for amendment on the agenda. First, on the consent agenda, add item E for the sheriff's office. It is accepting the tactical vehicle and approval of the budget amendment. Item F, sheriff's office, accepting the insurance proceeds and budget, approval of the budget amendment for that. And also adding a, adding a closed session item for economic development.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. John Welsh, who will do a presentation, Wreaths Across America presentation. Welcome, Mr. Welsh. I read your material, very impressive, and I look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes to come before you. This is in fact about Wreaths Across America. I'm not aware of how much you know about the project or the program. December 17th, we will have a ceremony at Liberty Gardens. In the past three years, county manager Andy Lucas has been present for us, and we appreciate that. I am here to personally invite all of you to attend the ceremony again this year. What it involves is we have a wreath that is presented in honor of the branches of military. That is, the Army, the Navy, the Air Force, the Marines, the Coast Guard, merchant marines, POWs, and MIA's. This year, we are also doing one for Gold Star Mothers. We will start at 11 o'clock. The ceremony probably will end about 12, 12:30. It is coordinated with the laying of the wreaths at Arlington Cemetery. Throughout the program's history, we have laid wreaths, and when I say "we," collectively, wreaths have been laid at graves of over 900,000 veterans who gave their lives. Not just in the United States, but it's also done around the world. It's done on the same day, at the same time. That's why we choose this particular day and time. So again, I ask and invite all of you to attend. I do have a little, I don't know what information you have, I do have a little right here. The second page to this also will involve a sponsorship form. It's just to let you know what it is. I am currently the commander of American Legion Post 520, and our American Legion Post is the one that sponsors this program. So again, thank you for allowing me to come and talk to you for just a few minutes, and hopefully, I don't care what the weather is, I look forward to seeing you there. If it's raining, well, so be it. I am a 25-year veteran of the Navy. I don't know if any of you are veterans, but if you know somebody that is, the weather be damned, we do our job. So we mean honor to people that never made it home for Christmas, and that's what this is about. Thank you.
Mr. Welsh.
Sir.
Would you repeat the date of the...
December 17th.
December 17th, and again, the time?
11 o'clock. As a Saturday morning, two weeks.
And at Liberty Gardens on West Main. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I think that's very fitting, as Winsey is the 75th anniversary of Pearl Harbor, and you beat a little bit of a history buff. Over 2,000 people died in Pearl Harbor that day, over 1,100 on USS Arizona, so that is very, very fitting. Thank you, Mr. Welsh.
As Mr. Welsh said, we're invited. I hope, I encourage anyone that can attend to be there on the 17th. Item number two, I would like to recognize Koteen Chau Moses, who is the Audit Manager with Martin Starnes and Associates, who will present the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2016.
I'm Koteen Chau Moses. I'm manager with Martin Starnes and Associates, and I'm the Audit Manager for Stanley County's financial audit. We're going to go through these slides, and these are fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016. I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to start as your auditors again another year. Most of these will be on the general fund. We'll have a couple slides on the enterprise funds. And if I go too quickly, I'll just slow you down, and if you have any questions, just slow me down. So under the audit highlights, Toby and the rest of the finance staff, they're always a pleasure to work with, so we appreciate them. They're very knowledgeable and cooperative, and they always get us in and out whenever we come for fieldwork. We really enjoy working with them, and we always look forward to coming to Stanley County. For fiscal year 16, our firm issued an unmodified opinion, so what that means is that we found no material misstatements that led us to believe that the financial statements would be misleading to its readers, and it is a clean, a clean opinion and the best, best opinion that we can give. So the county has passed its audit. With respect to the single audit compliance package, we found no, we had no findings or question costs, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies with the programs. And if we look at the general fund at end summary, as compared to the prior year, revenues increased approximately 3.4 percent, expenditures decreased 4.9 million. Just to point out, in 2015, you guys had a refunding of the Motorola lease, and that's in 2015's numbers. So when you kind of look at it, that 62 million from prior year, that includes debt service we're paying off that lease. Likewise, for revenues, the proceeds that were received is also in that 57 million. So when you're looking at it as compared to 2016, your revenues actually increased more, and then your expenditures actually decreased a little bit less than what that Motorola lease was. So if we go on to the next slide, it gives you a little bit of what fund balance is. It serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available. If you look at the balance sheet, it's assets plus deferred outflows minus your liabilities, minus your deferred inflows, and you'll get to your fund balance or net position. And the local government commission had approved Stanley County's audit this morning. I don't have the printed bound copies for you guys yet, but you should be seeing that a couple weeks of the audit report. But while we were talking, I just wanted to let you know they approved their report. So when you go and you look at your exhibit C, the balance sheet for fun, for the general fund, you'll see five different classifications for fund balance. Those classifications are non-spendable fund balance, restricted fund balance, committed fund balance, assigned and unassigned. The county ended up with 73,000 in non-spendable fund balance, 4.8 million with restricted fund balance, 250,000 in committed, 3.9 percent in assigned, and then 13 and a half million in unassigned fund balance. So available fund balance is defined by the local government commission as your total fund balance, less the non-spendable portion of fund balance, less stabilization by state statute. And that calculation is important because they use it to compare you with other units your size within North Carolina, and also in calculating your fund balance percentages. So if we go on to the next slide, you'll see where Stanley County stands with available fund balance. The county has 17.8 million in available fund balance at the end of 2016. That is an increase from prior year of about 2.2 million. And then if we look at your available fund balance as a percentage, the county ended up with 31.3, 31.3 percent. So the local government commission recommends that an entity have 8 percent, and what they do is they consider that one month's worth of expenditures. So if we look at Stanley County, you guys have almost four months' worth of, of fund balance and expenditures. So if we, this percentage, again, is they, they, they put Stanley County into a population, wherever your population falls, you're compared with other counties or other entities your population size, and if you fall below your peer group level, then the local government commission would issue a unit letter to you. So the next slide shows total fund balance in the general fund. You'll see the 2.3 million increase in the general fund's fund balance. And then the next slide shows the top three revenues for Stanley County. We've got agricultural taxes at 52 percent, restricted intergovernmental at 17 percent, local option sales tax at 14 percent, and then your other revenue categories at 17 percent. Your top three expenditure, revenues totaled about 48.8 million. And if we look at the next slide, it's got your, it's got your largest revenue source, which is agricultural taxes. We saw an increase of 1.1 percent from prior year, so pretty comparable to prior year. And the next slide, the restricted intergovernmental, this is where all your federal grants, local grants, or state grants lie, and we see an increase of about 3.1 percent from the prior year. The largest decrease in this category this year was Department of Social Services, federal and state funding. And the next slide shows local option sales tax. We saw a 7.1 increase from the prior year, and this increase is due to article sales tax distributions. And then the next slide will show you your top three expenditures in general fund. So these are by functions. These functions may have more than one department within it. The largest function of government is Human Services at 27 percent, followed by Education at 24 percent, Public Safety at 23 percent, and then your other functions of government make up 26 percent. So within the other expenditures, you've got Transportation, General Government, Environmental Protection, Economic and Fiscal Development, Culture and Recreation, and Debt Service. So if we look at Human Services, we saw an increase of about 2.4 percent from the prior year, and that's mainly due to increase in salaries and benefits. And then the next slide shows Education, a 4 percent increase from the prior year, and that's mainly due to the increase in the county's public schools' current expenditures and capital outlay lines. Then Public Safety was an increase of 5.9 percent from the prior year, and this increase happened in the Emergency Management Department relating to capital outlay purchases in 2016. And then the next slide starts your enterprise funds. And we'll start with the Water Districts. We've got Greater Baytown Water, Piney Point on that slide. Your unrestricted net position here in the enterprise fund is kind of like your unassigned fund balance in the governmental funds. So if you're looking to spend in these funds, you, you want to look at the unrestricted net position amounts. And Toby and I were just discussing, the operating expenditures that are shown here and the next couple slides also include depreciation expense. So if you were to back up a depreciation, these funds actually, some of, most of them actually had a positive operating income for the year rather than a loss. So Greater Baytown ended with operating loss at 101,000, Piney Point at operating income of 19,000. And then the next slide shows the West Stanley wastewater treatment plant fund, and that ended up with the operating loss of 19,000. And then the next slide is the Utility and the Airport Fund. And again, those are pretty comparable to prior year. All of the funds this year are actually pretty consistent with prior year's operations. So Utility Fund ended up with half a million operating loss, and the Airport Fund at 1.4 million in operating loss. And that's all I have for you guys tonight with 2016 financial numbers. Again, I mentioned, you should be having your copy of the audit report in a couple Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Burleson.
I would just ask Ms. Moses to go back through the third slide, general fund summary. When I first glanced at that, and I've already asked Mr. Lucas and Mr. Tenson, our finance officer, on this, so I forgot the answer, but I just wanted you to go back through that statement for the public. On 2015 and 2016, there's a spike there in 2015 of expenditures or about 4.9 million higher than it was in 2016. If you would go back through and explain that for us, please.
Yes, within the 2015's number, the 62 million dollars in expenditures, when you do a refunding or refinancing of debt, you have to show the whole piece of debt paid off, and then show revenues offset that of the proceeds coming, I'm sorry. Yes, the proceeds of the refinancing coming in. And so within the 62 million, you'll see that the Motorola lease last year, it was 6.8 million, so 6.8 of that 62 million was relating to the refinance.
And that was on the radio tower, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Any other questions of Mr. Chad Moses?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to accept the audit that's presented.
Sir. Commissioner Hefer made the motion, Commissioner Burleson second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like to recognize Andy Lucas, our county manager, to come and tell us about a project from Alamo to North Carolina Highway 200 water transmission, main project with a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is item actually that several previous boards have taken action on, but we felt like it was important that the new board be on record as supporting this project. This is a waterline project that would extend out and become a redundant waterline through the ND community and towards Highway 200 north of Locust. And so originally, the board took action back in December of 2014 to approve a similar resolution. We have asked our federal delegation, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has sought additional funding for this project. It's about a $9 million project. It's going to require a 25 percent match, which would be roughly $2 million, which the board will have to either take retained earnings from the utility funds or secure some debt financing and pay, pay that back and adjust the rates accordingly to offset the, the cost of that project. This is a project that's been on previous boards' radar and wanted to make sure that this board was still on board with doing that project and committing to the required match. The federal government will put up 75 percent of the money, the county will have to come up with the other 25 percent. So you have a resolution attached that we will, if the board approves, we will send off to our, our federal legislative delegation, so they're aware of this, so they can continue to try to work this additional money into the federal budget. Unfortunately, there hasn't really been a federal budget in the last few years. There've just been continuing resolutions, and as a result of that, really nothing new gets put in the budget. So we're hopeful that maybe this year will, as a result of the elections, that maybe there will actually be a federal budget that's approved, and this project will get some consideration. I'll be happy to answer any other questions. project will get some consideration. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burleson.
I would just like everyone to note, fellow commissioners here, the top of this resolution is our county logo, and it says water, air, land, success. And just note that the abundance amount of water that we have in Stanley County, and we still have areas of Stanley County that are poorly served with public water. And with this proposed waterline, majority of it being in the district that I was elected to represent in this county, and some of it being in Commissioner Effer's district, it's something I'm passionate about and will also help us provide services to the western end of the county. If the line was to break in certain areas of the county now, it would kind of cut off the western end, and this project would ensure that we keep service to the western end. So I fully support it and make a motion that we approve this resolution as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson. With the motion, we hear your second.
Second.
Commissioner McIntyre, any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. At this time, I would like to recognize Andy Lucas, our county manager, to talk about a delegate for the 2017 Legislative Goal Conference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Each year, our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners comes together and has a legislative conference to look at priorities. And actually, they do it every two years. And then in the short session, they use the goals from the previous year that carry forward, and they make some minor adjustments to that in their committees. But every two years, they have a, before the biennium begins, have a legislative goals conference where they talk about different goals that are looking to advocate for counties at the state level in terms of, and at the federal level as well, in terms of legislation that would help counties move forward, be more efficient, more effective, create better results for our citizens. So they're seeking a delegate from Stanley County to represent Stanley County at that conference and vote on your behalf. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burleson.
I was just going to offer, I would be willing to go there and serve. I'm going to be there on business the afternoon of the 11th, and would be willing to be there and serve if it was a pleasure, board.
Thank you, Commissioner Burleson.
I'll make a motion. We let Commissioner Rinalson to attend the conference.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Effer, seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, I have done this in the past several times, and that's two days of really sitting down and working. But y'all go and play at this conference, not like some. But it's a good conference, and you see a lot of different viewpoints from everybody in different counties, wanting their piece of pie and wanting it their way. So it's very interesting. But I'll thank you all, George.
Any other comments? All in favor of appointing Commissioner Burleson, please say aye. Any opposed? Seven oh carries. County Manager Andy Lucas is up again, going to go over code of ethics.
I'll say the time of reading it. Y'all have had it in your packet. Per General Statute 168-86, you must reaffirm your code of ethics by December 31st of each year. You've had it in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The board will need to take action this evening to reaffirm the code of ethics or make any adjustments that you may so choose. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Lauter.
If I stand to be corrected, but I believe there were no changes from last year. Is that correct?
That's correct. Unless you all make a change.
Thank you.
Pleasure to the board. Move we approve.
Second.
Commissioner Burleson made the motion, Commissioner McIntyre seconded. Any other discussion?
It's worth reading. What did y'all do?
I hope all commissioners have read it. I agree with Commissioner McIntyre. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Item number six is the consent agenda. I believe earlier we made some changes, and that consent agenda was approved. So at this time, are there any other questions before we proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe the amendments were laid here before on the die stone when we got up here, so I hope everyone has them. But I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Commissioner Burleson made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Lauter. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. It's time for public comments. I'm not sure if we had anyone to sign up.
Mr. Honeycutt.
Last time I was here, y'all gave me a couple months of these homes back in order. And I've got the homes back in order, I didn't need to do. But the heating systems, I've got a couple of those that the electricians haven't put in yet, and I don't know when exactly he'll put them in. And I wanted to know that the homes was done on the inside, it was remodeled, the windows, doors, anything they needed, we replaced. I do need to go more time on the heating systems. Let's see what you thought about that.
Mr. Honeycutt, during public comments, it's your time to speak to the board. The board at this time has no comments back to you or anyone else.
Well, I just, I can't do the electrical. I have to have somebody hired out to get it done. And he just needs, I think he just needs more time to get these, a couple of them put in. It's going to be about a minute of time.
I would encourage you to go to the zoning department and talk with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak?
I don't have a plan on speaking, but I got something I want to bring up. I don't know how many of y'all I saw, 60 Minutes this week. Economic Development guy on 60 Minutes. Joseph's laughing because Commissioner Burleson's laughing because I sent it to him and Representative Burr. But this guy is out of this world. And if we shake up our economic development doing the same thing over and over and over is getting us to nowhere. I think y'all all need to look at that. You need to consider doing something different. You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over, getting the same results, and we're getting no results. I think something different needs to be done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to ask Commissioner Morgan for comments, if you would like any closing comments.
I'd just like to say thanks to everybody. I look forward to working with all of y'all.
Commissioner Swine.
Again, I'd just like to say thank you to the citizens of Stanley County for giving me this opportunity, and I look forward to serving them and working with everybody up here.
Commissioner Effer.
Well, congratulations, Jim. You cut that oath out in just one reading. Appreciate Mr. Honeycutt and Representative Burr being here. And congratulations, Sheriff Lauter, and congratulations Vice Chair Burleson. If you hadn't had the opportunity, out in the hallway out there, the Festival of Trees started tonight. There's not a person in this room that cancer doesn't affect, either my family member, a friend, coworker. So they did a great job decorating those trees, so I would suggest you go out there and take a look at them. And I don't think I'll see you before Christmas, so Merry Christmas. We still say that in the western end of the county.
Commissioner Lauter.
Well, we say it in the southern part of the county, and my husband's from the northern part, and they still say it there. So Merry Christmas. I hope everyone that's traveling has a safe journey and a safe return home. And all the children get all the things they've asked Santa Claus for, and thank you.
Commissioner McIntyre.
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mr. Burleson.
Mr. Chairman, congratulations. Congratulations to Commissioner Swine and Commissioner Morgan. Look forward to working with each one of you in the upcoming year with all my fellow board members. And also like to congratulate, I think, school board member Poole McIntyre-Gibson. I think that's all that's out there seeing the crowd, but congratulate you guys, and I know you guys are going to have a big night tomorrow night. And thank you, Representative Burr for being here, Sheriff Burris, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
County Manager Andy Lucas, do you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Council Jenny Fur, do you have anything?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Clerk Tyler Brun, do you have anything?
Well, it's my time. And I congratulate Joseph Vice Chair. I congratulate Ashley and Matthew for being on the commission, getting elected, and now the fun part begins. And I would encourage all of the committee assignees, those meetings are just as important as general commissioner meetings. Those departments depend on participation and attendance. So if you're assigned to a committee and you cannot make a committee meeting, I would ask that you contact, if there's an alternate, the alternate to go in your place. If the alternate cannot go, I would recommend you contact Clerk Tyler Brun, and she will send an email out and try to get someone that's on the board to attend those meetings. Because again, I emphasize, they are just as important as this commission meeting that we have on the first and third Monday of each month. Changing gears, this is the last meeting before Christmas. We've gone through Thanksgiving, and all of us had a great Thanksgiving meal. I have no doubt in my mind about it. But I remember one thing my pastor told me the Sunday before Thanksgiving. He said, "Our Thanksgiving meal is a better meal than most of the countries outside of the U.S. will ever have in their entire lives. We are a blessed nation. We are a blessed people." And remember that during the Christmas season. Remember it throughout the year, because if you see somebody in need, they've been put there for a reason, and I hope that you will realize there's a need and will do something about it. Thank you. And at this time, we're not going to adjourn the regular meeting. We need a motion to go into closed session to discuss an economic development project in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go in closed session.
I second. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. No opposed.